Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SASD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting have been posted as required by state law. Also, you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and the most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at our regular board meeting. As members of SASD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide official timekeeper. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee decision or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance, please remember that this will not be permitted to be discussed during public comment. Also, please understand if you offer public comment that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking, and I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cellphones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SASD. We do have a quorum this evening. Our entire board team is present. And with that, if y'all would stand with me, we will proceed with our pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas life, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, next, we're going to move forward with public comment with Mr. Jamal Schumpert. He's going to come up and talk about academics.
My name is Jamal Schumpert, and congratulations on starting your construction on the World War II Memorial downtown. It's gonna look nice, I know. But I was here to talk about, maybe we could use some of the Title I funds or some of our funds to create like an academic Olympics, maybe like a decathlon or maybe a pentathlon. And we picked the subjects, and we get to align them with the star for now. I know they're trying to get rid of the star, but they haven't found anything to replace it. So as long as we align it with the star, I think we'll be good. And we should probably separate the teams, maybe based on GPA. Not saying that all A students be in one group, but you probably have one A student, one B student, one C student where the GPAs align more closely. That way, they get like the overall understanding of how to work cooperatively from, you know, the C student to the A student. And hopefully, it'll raise the grades. And I think it'll be more competitive between your groups. I wouldn't separate them by schools because of, you know, regional differences. And also, I think we should focus more on the high school, because I saw a growing trend where a lot of elementary schools are suffering, and middle schools are doing okay, but by the time they get to high school, they're doing pretty good. And our situation on our report card, it's just like all around, we just don't close that gap by the time they get to high school. And I looked at some of the teams we play in our district, not just any old teams in Texas, just the ones we played in our district. And when it comes to creating academic athletics, maybe in middle school, you do PE. In high school, it might be a little more challenging to get the kids to get into it, but I know if you created a debate, if that was one of your subjects, they might be a little bit more interested if you include like special topics and interests going on now. I don't want to take up too much of your time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Next on our agenda is our Finance and Audit Committee Workshop, which tonight is report. As everyone recalls, the finance part of that is, will be done next week at our regular board agenda. So we have Ms. Claudia Basara. She's gonna come up and give us a summary of findings of the TEA Intruder Detection Audit conducted by DSC staff.
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, and members of the board, thank you for your time. We have had four intruder detection audits in the month of October and the first week of November. Any findings and corrective actions needed, if any, have been addressed by our campus administration.
Thank you. Next, we have a construction update from Park Hill, and Hector de Santiago is here to help us with that this evening.
Good evening, President Kingman, Dr. Moran, Board of Trustees, Hector Santiago, Park Hill Smith &amp; Cooper Partner. Just want to go ahead and update you all on latest progress of the projects, bond projects. We've been just elated to be working with everybody at the district and those projects. A lot of good input and progress has been made in this past month. And so, again, just general timeline of the bond projects. I'll go ahead and maybe look at these. All right. So obviously, some of the critical safety and capital renewal and the planning and design of all the projects is primarily what's in 2025. Again, continuing with safety and capital renewal projects in 2026. A crockett renovation is under construction. I'll show you some pictures later on. That should be complete by 2026, and then some other turf replacement and Lakeview lighting as well in 2026. As well, Fannie renovation should be complete in 2027, and McGill renovation complete. I'll have some photos, renderings of those as well. I won't go into more detail of the other ones right now. We'll go into overall project timelines. You see more of the, sort of the orange color is the design process throughout, then the yellow is the bidding, and then the blue is the construction. Overall, you know, we're still on track right now. One of the projects, McGill, that I'm, my group is working on, one of the first ones to go out, we should, we're on track to deliver that construction documents at the end of this month. As far as, you know, progress on crockett, I was there this afternoon, kind of looking at a rebar, taking advantage of a site visit to, for this board meeting, and they're gonna be pouring concrete tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM. You're more than welcome to go at that time as well. But, you know, recent activity, foundation permit received, they continue with the foundation, underground plumbing, electrical, and again, you know, just the concrete pour that'll be happening early tomorrow morning. As you can see, some progress photos of those footings being, have been excavated with the rebar and the vapor barrier that goes in that before the concrete. And moving on to McGill Elementary School. As you can see, we've recently finished pre-final CDs. Essentially, we're just doing the final QAQC of those. We did have review meetings to discuss graphics that we are planning on incorporating, and had a meeting with City San Angelo. We do have another one, a follow-up one with them on Wednesday, and like I mentioned, we do plan on finishing construction documents and putting out to bid in late November. You might see the rendering, it's actually a drone image of the actual existing McGill Elementary School, superimposed with the renderings of the additions with the library and the admin, as well as the classroom wing on the north end. Just to show you rendering, looking at it from the west, that drive is the bus loop, and you know, where we're kind of sort of standing is the parking lot, and you're looking at the north classroom addition, that the two white stone veneer spaces, Makerspace and Amusec, you know, have a little bit of higher ceiling space to get natural light in those spaces, and then you have some of the science classroom on the corner that you see right in front of you. So then to the right, you'll see the existing exit that is at the existing school. And just, I do want to note that the playground is not exactly what is shown there. It is a little different, but just to finish the rendering, we incorporate something that looks similar to it, but just to give you references to more or less where that playground is going to be located. Then you see a rendering of the south facade of the library and a portion of the admin, and you can see how it, there's also like an exterior canopy from the dining space leading to the play court, and you see the existing metal building to the left. Interior rendering of the library, just starting to, you know, we're matching the existing colors that were implemented in Phase One project with some graphics incorporated into the library. And yeah, just, it's gonna be a very nice space. Continue on, you know, some of the, for Glenn Middle School, a lot of meetings have happened, you know, geotechnical investigations have been requested. We have previously received the survey information. The construction manager at risk contract execution is in process last Thursday, I believe. I think they were wanting to, you know, iron out a couple of items, and so I just need to follow up if those are, have been ironed out. Then, this one is scheduled to, the schematic design is scheduled to be submitted November 18th, so a little over a week from now. And yeah, tomorrow will be a week from tomorrow. And yeah, just, it's been amazing how much great input we've received from all stakeholders, and administrators, and leadership at the district, students, you know, teachers, and a lot of back and forth, and you know, we always tell our clients, you know, you are the experts in education. We are here just to help, you know, bring your vision to life. And I really believe that that process has been very true in this particular projects. Site plan of Glenn Middle School, it's still, some items being finalized, tweaked prior to the submission of a schematic design. And you see, you know, obviously, the building in that sort of orange color, and then obviously football and track, and then parking lots and the drop-offs as well. This is floor plan from a couple of weeks ago. They were, they had received some input as far as looking at some things of maybe flipping some locations of some items, like the library and the admin, excuse me, the, yeah, the library and some open area of the green space right there at the bottom center. So I think that's still being looked at. I was, I think I'm supposed to get an update tomorrow on that, so we'll see about that. But overall, I mean, we made a lot of progress with everybody's help on this project. And again, that's scheduled to be submitted on the 18th. Just want to go ahead and kind of give you a little background on this, this image. We're looking, obviously, Glenn, you know, there might be one or two classrooms with windows at the existing Glenn Middle School. So that's one thing that came up as very important to everybody, making sure that they have a lot of natural light coming in. So we did a daylight analysis, which will be done on all projects, has been done on previous projects as well. So this image kind of shows you all that light green is, is natural light coming in, get into the spaces, the top being the first floor and the second, the bottom one being the second floor. So you see a lot of that, and then we can figure out ways to incorporate some side lights by the doors to bring in more natural light into some of the interior spaces as well. Contrary to that, we also make sure we analyze solar radiation, making sure that we don't have hot spaces. So we do analysis, and where you do see the hotspots at the bottom of those images is where we'll incorporate some type of treatment, whether it's sun shading or take care with, you know, more film that's darker in the glazing, different modes, but this is just analysis to help us identify those areas that we need to make sure we address. Just some massing studies of, of the volumes, of different volumes of the academic wing, the gymnasium, and the auditoriums, the, you know, fine arts areas. So just starting to do that, and the team had a, you know, a walkthrough a couple of weeks ago. We didn't generate renderings, we should have, but we didn't generate renderings of that yet. But that's, I think, once we turn it in, we'll be able to do that. Moving on to Lakeview, Lakeview schematics have already been turned in, and had a page turn review meeting last week, just kind of going page by page, and it's like, hey, just want to make sure everybody's clear on what we have, and we have everything that you need, and just, you know, going, going over detail. So we have received a preliminary survey. Again, C-MAR contract execution is underway, and had pre-development meeting with City of San Angelo, with showing them with a schematic design. I was not part of that one, but kind of try and be part of those for the other ones. And essentially, what's next is design development. There will still be some tweaking in the floor plan as we're into design development, but in design development, we really get all the engineers to start laying out structural grids, mechanical systems, electrical systems, you know, make sure we have the IT rooms in appropriate locations throughout the campus and things like that. So that's pretty much what's going on, and then one other thing is, you know, obviously, we're at a point with the schematics to send them to Lee Lewis once they're fully on board, so they can give us a price. But additionally, we're onboarding a third-party estimator as well, just to make sure we have good data as far as costing of the projects as they stand, make sure that we stay in line with the budgets. And this is a overall site plan of Lakeview. You'll see the different colors, and hopefully, you can see on your screens that, you know, what, what is renovation, athletic renovation, mariachi renovation, mariachi new construction, CTE renovation, and CTE new construction, J-ROT renovation. And some of those, you know, like the gymnasium, existing gymnasium, it's just very light renovation, you know, they requested painting and, and some lighting, I believe. And then, you know, if, can I point to something? Hmm, that's all right. It's just the purple, you know, there you go. That's the mariachi addition. So you'll see some images. What we really try to do is make sure it's functional, but also blends in with the campus so it doesn't look like it's just tacked on there. And then, you know, obviously, with the CTE spaces building, you know, we, we're renovating the existing building there, and then the existing J-ROT building, we renovated it, and then doing some CTE spaces over there, and then the addition below the J-ROT, then creating some yards, you know, delivery yards for, for those type of spaces, automotive and wood shop and lonely shop spaces. Also, trying to make sure we don't create any traffic issues by, you know, creating the bus loop, and that was one of the comments we received, to go ahead and kind of put it on the side street versus on the front street, which we'll be making that adjustment. And then we're also creating another drop-off, just driving some, some of the handicap parking spaces south of the mariachi addition.
Hector, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So as the board looks at this site plan, a couple of things. First of all, the top is your northern portion, and the buses actually run in the back of the school right now. There's about seven or eight that run. You'll notice in the bottom right corner, there's a bus drop-off that's designed there, but that would actually be turned to face the eastern street, south of the delivery and supply yard where that current parking lot is. That could be a bus pickup drop-off to, to get that bus traffic off of the front of the school as it's designed here. We think that would be a traffic jam, but also to remove it from the back of the school where it's very inconvenient. That gate creates a lot of problems. So we're talking about pushing it to the east side of the campus. That way, parent pickup on the south side can still occur uninterrupted. Those buses would enter from the north side, if you can imagine, and do a loop, and then exit back out to the north. That way, they would be clear of all the parent pickup and drop-off. So that's the current discussion now.
Yes, correct. And that's, and there was discussion as part of the page turn review meeting that we had last, late last week. Right, and then, next slide, please. Oh, okay, sorry. Got used to you. All right. This is showing the athletic areas, a lot of the existing spaces that we're renovating to create more usable, bigger locker rooms. For example, voice varsity, currently, that's kind of sectioned off with vertical walls right now. That square you see in the bottom is just a column that we'll need to incorporate once we do that. But yeah, it's gonna make it a lot more easily to, to have supervision and usable for, for that space, that type of space. And yeah, we also for storage, where we have laundry, you know, equipment, and, you know, just renovating some light renovations, some spaces like the coaches' office and other areas that were, gender varsity is also getting renovated and relaid out, just to make it more functional and more easy, and definitely taking out the urinals from the girls' locker room as well. Just a blow-up of that weight room right now. Obviously, there's some things that need to be addressed in that weight room, and then obviously, creating, you know, single shower rooms, shower stations as well, and providing more storage. That's just always seems to be a need. A blow-up of the rehearsal hall for the mariachi. As you see, we're doing some light renovation, the boys' and girls' dressing rooms, and giving access from the south end for the mariachi people into those spaces, creating the office suite, the uniform storage, and then obviously, the practice ensemble rooms as well, and then creating those restrooms that require by code, and doing a little bit of renovation on the existing space further up, and gray, converting those into single staff restrooms as well. So again, you know, one of the things we wanted to do is try to fit it in with the existing architecture that's there. That auditorium is a very prominent wall, and this location is what really makes sense, and not add too much square footage for the mariachi, but, you know, just complement the existing architecture. And one of the things that was communicated is, you know, just no clear entry into the gymnasium auditorium, so creating a canopy that kind of helps you lead people towards, towards that entrance for the gymnasium. Some elevations of that mariachi from, looking from south, west, and east. And couple perspectives of that. And I forgot to say it, but please stop me if you have any questions on anything, you know, so. Going into the CTE and the J-ROTC spaces, what's, you know, the rectangle to your left is the existing CTE building, so that's getting pretty close to gutted and relayed out for the Health Flex Lab, the J-ROTC Bay, and J-ROT Classrooms, Computer Lab, and yeah, pretty much those spaces. Then the top rectangle to the right is current in J-ROTC building, and so that's getting into, renovating to building welding shop, the welding classrooms, and then the shifats and cheer space with lockers as well. Going down below that red line is new construction, and that would be the wood shop, the automotive shop, and the floor shop, as well as some of the accessory spaces, the classrooms and the restrooms and offices. And then, it's not labeled here, but on the site plan, it was as far as the lay-down yards for, for the, all that material, welding shop and wood shop that they would require.
Hector, or, nevermind.
Okay. All right, so, you know, one of, the, some of the existing site utilities kind of drove a lot of this, not to expend too much on some utility relocations, and so some of the things we're doing is, you know, it's not fully connected, especially where it was initially shown in the master plan. There's just a lot of utilities that you're gonna be spending a lot of money, and, and then, how do you deal with them during construction? Because you still need those utilities to keep your building functional. So, you know, that's why we gravitated and toward, towards this solution with, with the buildings a little bit further to the, to the east. And yeah, this is more or less an area of the CTE buildings as you see them, possible greenhouse, we do anticipate, we'll put that as an alternate, and then you see covered walkways to help protect from rain and sun. Just some perspectives of those images of, of the area. As you can see, trying to incorporate some sun shading devices, and just a rhythm of columns and try to respect the existing architecture. Moving on to Central High School, again, received a preliminary survey recently. Again, construction agreements, the same construction manager for all projects, so it's the same update as far as contract execution underway. Had some follow-up meetings, and just as of Friday or today, the schematic design deliveries were finalized, so I tried to send a message before the meeting, it's like, hey, has this been transmitted? I didn't get a response before I started presenting, so. But yeah, if, if it was not transmitted today, most likely, very likely, you'll see it tomorrow. The project manager and process of setting the pre-development meeting, those have been very helpful when we've done previous projects, just to see where they stand and what they require and move forward with that, you know, whether they require UDR reform design review. And yeah, just to make sure that we don't hit a snag later on, make sure we're coordinating with them too. And then, yeah, just, you know, we'll, we'll transmit the SD package to the C-MAR as soon as their contract executed, and again, onboarding a third-party cost estimator. Some images of some of the design shirets we had, and then the site plan, more or less where, where it is situated, you know, the You know, the, the fine arts, the auditorium will be at the corner. Then we'll have the gymnasium, then we'll have the dining and kitchen. And then the existing dining and kitchen will be renovated, um, to some spaces, which I'll show blowups of them here shortly. Again, overall floor plan. Here is the fine arts, uh, as far as the auditorium, the stage, all the back of house, uh, type of spaces, the classrooms and the makeup room and the black box as well. Then the gymnasium, uh, yeah, it's two level. You, you'll see right now where this is the concourse level. Uh, we did recently receive some, uh, a geotechnical report on this. And we'll need to kind of go ahead and move up the building a little bit so that we're not having to excavate as much, um, of the existing soils. Uh, this is the court level, our floor plan with a lot of the locker rooms in these, on this floor. And you see the court itself. And then the dining and kitchen and serving. And then, um, it's between the gymnasium and the dining, we have a pretty nice, um, hall lobby, you know, very shared lobby space, uh, that'll be very nice to, to be there. And then the existing cafeteria and kitchen will be renovated into the culinary classrooms, culinary lab, um, the health sciences classroom and the health sciences lab as well. Um, yeah, we, that was a little bit more challenged initially than finally figure out a way to, uh, work out a good solution. Some elevations and I, I do want to point out the auditorium portion right now on the current images that I did not get a chance to fully update. It's mainly the, the stage area that's really tall, not the entire auditorium. So there's a little bit of, uh, updating that needs to happen on this images. But you get a pretty good sense of, of the magnitude of the, the building addition. Some sections, um, and again, this, what you see sort of in this magenta color of auditorium is, you know, it's mainly the auditorium, uh, left portion of, of that auditorium is what's really tall. And the other spaces will go down. But you get a good sense of the, um, cross section of the gymnasium as well on the bottom section. And then, yeah, just starting to sketch out some perspectives on how it, it could look like. That's viewing into the gymnasium. And viewing to gymnasium from the interiors, um, side. And, uh, yeah, just starting to look at seating layout, um, making sure we have all the requirements and basketball goals, court layouts, cross courts, everything. And tunnel access into those, the court level. And, uh, yeah, also just wanted to let you know that last month, October, we also had a bond oversight committee presentation. I think it went very well and, yeah. That is what I have for you. If you have any questions, by all means, please feel free to ask me.
Any questions?
What's the capacity gonna be on that cafeteria for Central? I mean, it's gonna be bigger than what it is right now.
Definitely bigger and I'm, I'm, so many different numbers that I've been looking at lately. I, I would need to get back with you, uh, on the exact number of capacity.
Hector, I think I can, I'm gonna throw a number out there that I've heard several times, about 860.
That sounds about right.
And it may be a little more or less, but about, that's the number I've heard used several times. 350, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, so it's, it's gonna be close to thr- triple, uh, what it is. I, that's, that I recall that, uh, that it was going to be almost three times what your capacity is. But, yeah, thank you, Dr. Moran.
Hector probably, probably don't know this to either, but the seating capacity of the gym and the auditorium?
Uh, that, if I remember correctly, is, my gosh, I can't believe I'm forgetting.
We can get them Friday fax.
I, I, I will get you those numbers, right now I'm just drawing a blank.
Uh, 22, yeah, 2200 is what I recall as well.
Yes, I was thinking it was, uh, 2000, but.
It may be 2000, yeah.
Any other questions? Only question I have is on the crockett renovation. What are the hard dates that we need to be looking at? Like concrete needs to be poured by X, walls need to be up by Y in order to.
To make August.
Make a decision by August.
Um, we'll have a better idea on that in a couple of months. Um, that, you know, once we see the concrete.
You mean January or, sorry, I just, I don't wanna hold, um, but a couple of months, like, are we?
Yeah.
We'll have an idea in January, we'll have an idea in March.
No, we'll have an idea in January because, you know, we can see, you know, the progress and that progress as far as concrete footing is being poured tomorrow, uh, we'll see. And then, you know, we'll ask them, the OEC meeting, our owner architect contractor meetings on this Thursday. So we'll ask them when this deal is scheduled to be delivered. From that, we'll have a, a better idea. And then in January, um, we'll have a definite idea of if it'll be done before fall semester.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next report is Coach Chant, and he's gonna talk about our UIL realignment update.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, Board of Trustees. Just want to give you a report on the updated UIL realignment. Um, if you're under where every two years, the UIL gathers enrollment figures and realigns districts throughout the state. On October 31st was the snapshot number, uh, for all high schools in the state. Uh, for San Angelo ISD, Lakeview submitted, uh, 1,043 enrolled, which will keep them in 4A, um, and Division One in football. And then Central submitted 2,774, which will keep them in 6A. On February 2nd, the UIL will release the district alignment for the 2026 through 2028 school years. While I cannot tell you with certainty where we will end up, I can tell you there will be a shift in our districts in some way, shape, or form due, due to a number of schools dropping in enrollment slash classification in our current 4A and 6A football districts. For example, in 4A Division One, both Big Spring and Pecos have turned in numbers that is gonna drop them to Division Two, which means there's only two people left in our current district. So somewhere, shape, or form, um, we're gonna have to gather, uh, other, uh, other teams from around West Texas. I know Greenwood has submitted enough to go up to 4A Division One. The only other one that I'm aware of is Plainview has turned in numbers to drop down to 4A Division One. Other than that, those are the only 4A Division One schools in West Texas until you get up to the Panhandle. Um, in 6A, Friendship will be dropping to 5A because of the opening of Friendship Memorial, which now puts us in a five-team district with Odessa and Midland Schools. Um, and UIL does not like to have five-team districts. So we don't really know what direction we're gonna do or go, whether we're gonna stay where we are and bring people in, or a shift of going in different directions. Um, I know San Angelo, San Angelo has gone to Colleen and Waco Midway, they've gone to the Metroplex. Um, and so again, uh, February 2nd, when I open up the packet, I'll know exactly what's going on because if, at this point, it's all pure speculation, so.
Robbie, are, uh, 6A, is it D1 or D2?
They are not split up until you put them, until all four teams are in the playoffs.
Oh, okay, okay.
5A and below, they go Division One and Division Two. But in 6A, once you put them in and you do the places, then they go either into Division One or Division Two, um, based on their enrollment numbers.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Are there any other questions that you might have?
When are you gonna find out? You said you get to open up your packet and.
February, February 2nd. We'll be at the region center and they'll hand us a packet and we open it up and look to see where we're at and start, um, trying to find preseason games if we need to because depending on the size of the, the district or, you know, um, hopefully we've got our preseason set and then we get our district and, uh, we don't have to make any adjustments. But that doesn't happen very often, so.
Thank you, Coach Chant, any other questions?
I will make a comment just about scheduling. Sometimes questions come up about, um, academic schedules because we set that earlier than the UIL realigns districts. And then sometimes, uh, an individual may ask, well, you know, why is homecoming on a certain date? And so some of these schedules don't just, i- it's not as easy as one, two, three. So we'll set the academic calendar, we'll get the, uh, UIL realignment, they'll jockey for position and games and.
We'll, we'll draw numbers to determine the order of scheduling and then you go through a specific, um, scheduling, uh, process that you have through the UIL where they've got those one versus five, two versus four, three versus six, whatever the case may be. You follow that pattern and, uh, where, where it lies is where it lies in regards to who you play that in specific weeks.
It's like Wall Street that day. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, uh, we're gonna have an enrollment impact on budget update from Dr. Brandon.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, Board of Trustees, just a quick update, a few slides on declining enrollment and then how that affects the budget, the overall financial and facility considerations, uh, for the district. As we track enrollment for the past, declining enrollment for the past, past five years, it's been falling at a one, one and a half percent rate, which was normally 150 to 250 students. Uh, as you can see here, uh, just from last year, normally wherever we ended in May, we were pretty close to the start of the school the next year. Um, and then we would lose 200 students from August to May. And so I budgeted that on a loss of 250, uh, to be conservative. Well, we've lost 304 already. And so I would project now that we would lose another 150 between now and May. Uh, just, just the way that it's, it's happened, uh, over the last three years. So the overall impact, uh, for that, uh, is about just a little over $2 million, uh, for those students, uh, that we will not have in attendance. Um, although we collect school district taxes, we receive our state aid based on student membership. So anytime the enrollment goes down, the funding from the state is less. We know that in building the budget, the, uh, top category in the budget, uh, for the amount, that we spend is, uh, salaries, 81 to 83%. A lot of school districts even higher than that. So the only way you're gonna make up ground in the budget is in staffing. And so we've tried to track, um, and keep an eye on student as the student enrollment, uh, membership has declined. We've tried to mimic that, it's usually a one-year lag. Once you see the number of students, uh, the school's start, has already started, right? You have the staff that you have and it takes a year to catch up from that. So you can see what the staffing counts have done during COVID, they fell immediately, uh, because weren't really sure what school was gonna look like, uh, when school started back in 2021. And then the state provided ESSR funding for all school districts. And you can see that staff was put in place to help with, uh, reading intervention, math intervention, all kinds of different things to try to get kids back on track as quickly as possible after missing a year of school. And then from there, as we've seen a decline in enrollment, uh, you see we've gone from 18, right around 1850 now down below 1800 in staffing. So I know that, um, as we've talked about school closure, this is just an example after tracking the numbers, both at Altaloma to Fannin and from Austin to McGill. Uh, this is just a good example of what happens, uh, in a school closure. In both of those examples, those two campuses, five teaching positions were able to move. We didn't lose those, right? We moved those to the other campus, uh, but in that, um, there were five that did not have to be replaced. Uh, instructional media, you know, of course you've got a principal and assistant principal, you've got a school counselor, you've got a school nurse, you've got a cafeteria manager and a couple of workers. Uh, plant maintenance operation has the property casualty insurance built in and then a school resource officer, uh, along with that. So right at 900,000, um, in any type of elementary school closure. And so a lot of factors go into that. Um, certainly the size of the campus is one of those, the age of the campus. Uh, but also what kind of condition is the facility in? What's the capacity of that campus? Is it a, is it a campus that we're gonna hold on to long-term, right? That has the capacity for growth? What's the operational cost? Um, you know, what kind of heating and air conditioning, windows, uh, electrical? Uh, what, what does it cost us to maintain and operate that campus? Expandability, um, what's the footprint? Is, is there room there later, uh, to add on to or to build another, um, set of classrooms if needed? Uh, special programs, is it built to house any type of special program? And then educate, educational and spatial adequacy, how big's the cafeteria? Um, you know, we have campuses that you may have to cut through one classroom to get to another classroom. Uh, just the way that certain things are built. Glenn Middle School having six-foot hallways with 1,200 students, right? That type of thing. So what was it built for and how adequate is that space? How well are we able to use it? Those are all factors that we'll talk about over the next couple of months as we look to see where, um, when we lose 500 students, you can relate that to a whole elementary school just being gone, every student at the school. And so as we've gone from 15,000 now to 12,500, you know, will we be at 12,000 next year? I don't know. Uh, we keep hoping it's gonna level, uh, but it hasn't done that, not only in San Angelo, but at, in the state, across the nation. Uh, we continue to see those declines, so. What questions could I answer? We'll build off of these factors in campus closure, we'll build off that over the next couple of months as we talk through those situations and then, um, what that capacity looks like for saving, uh, almost a million dollars, uh, in a closure.
Any questions for Dr. Brandon? Um, the link that was in our Friday fax, will this PowerPoint be uploaded into that same link so we can?
And Dr. Dr. Brandon, the, the, I guess it was like 300 that we've lost in the past few months. Do we know what age group that is? That where those kids came, you know, was it elementary that left, middle school, or was it all over?
The, the bulk of that is in elementary and the shrinking pre-K K, uh, is what we're seeing. You know, in the past, you might have 800 kindergarteners and 700 seniors, right? As they transition out, you lose a few K-12. Uh, but now what we're seeing is that we have the 700 seniors, but now we may only have 600, uh, kindergartners. So we don't have the elementary students coming fast enough to replace the students that are leaving.
Any other questions?
That's a good question though, um, we'll, I'll put a slide in there that shows exactly which, uh, grade levels, uh, that were hit the hardest.
Thank you, Dr. Brandon. All right. We are now gonna go into executive session under 551.074, which is Personnel Matters and 551.076, which is Security. And we will be back. All right, we are back from executive session. We took no votes, no action was taken. Um, we're gonna be forward with reviewing our proposed agenda for, um, our September 17th meeting. Uh, we have invocation pledge, recognitions, public comments, information items. We're gonna have a construction update by Carl Danheim. And he's gonna tell us how those, that concrete poured. And he's going to tell us how those, that concrete pour went. And then we're going to do an update on academic programs with Dr. Gomez, beginning of your map.
Yes, sir. We will, um, we will actually address each of the three academic board goals that you all approved, um, but the meat of it will be around MAP. I think it's also important to point out that we'll be talking specific to pre-K and K, especially as we've talked about our new partnership with Head Start and about students entering our system well below. There's just some important community conversations we need to be having, so that will be a part of the report as well. So we'll go all the way from pre-K through high school.
And, um, just for board sake, cause some, will you make sure you say, hey, goal one, goal two, goal, goal three for us?
Yes, absolutely. So even when Ms. Taunton goes here in a few minutes, um, and talks specific to the performance objectives, uh, it's, and I think you all have these at your seats, um, but how each one of the academic goals are listed there, that will be the very first slide of the academic update, um, next week as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Gomez.
Quick, quick question. Uh, do you compare like end of seventh grade year MAP to like first of eighth grade?
By cohort, yes. It's very important that we're looking at cohorts of students, so.
So that'll be included?
Mm-hmm. Yep. And, and we have done that and show the arrows so you can see the cohorts of the students and you're not just reading the chart from left to right because they're different kids.
I just need help, so appreciate it.
It's okay, but we do have the arrows, yes, sir.
All right, and then Dr. Brandon, um, you had, do more presentation on facilities planning?
Yes.
Okay. Isn't that perfect? Is that going to be similar to the presentation this evening?
We'll kind of start with a couple of those slides and then we'll do kind of like the hammer chart, the heat maps, uh, the facilities and then some of those, uh, uh, heating, electrical, all those things kind of timeout on each campus.
Perfect. Um, all right, next, uh, we'll have the, we'll have, there's some consent items to look at. We'll have donations, our minutes from our October meetings and then, uh, library books, which we will, these are the library books that have been, will at that point in time have been posted long enough for us to then approve.
Yes, and it's just a reminder, you all received the list. It's a reminder that elementary is not a mistake, that there is only the one title in this month's, um, because it delays us at least 30 days to place an order to go through the process. So we will have a very long elementary list on the next order submission.
Perfect.
Just one makes people think something was wrong. It's not an error.
Perfect. All right, and then action items, um, our multi-hazard emergency operations plan, we'll look at that next week. And then Ms. Taunton, you're going to come talk to us about, are you talking, yes, she is here. You would give us kind of a starter on what we're talking about with the 25, 26 district and campus improvement plans for next week.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran and members of the board. Uh, yes, you have before you the, uh, a summary of the performance objectives. And these are measurable targets for reaching each of the goals and there are the five goals that you also have. The performance objectives are based on achievement indicators, which include student, the student achievement domain, the school process domain and closing the gaps for all students groups. And, uh, these performance objectives are district-wide, so they're district performance objectives and they're the same ones for each of the campuses.
Any questions? And this is, part of this is what we have to do as a public hearing for next week, correct? It has to be, um, no?
No, it's just approval. It's, y'all will approve them or not.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Taunton about that next week?
I have a quick question. Um, I was wondering if Head Start's academics are aligned with our pre-K academics?
In goal two, um, it was about, uh, ensuring that they attend, uh, staff development alongside SA ISD, so that was shared with them. Uh, we're hoping that that's something that they'll do and I know that's the reason that we have the extended day as well so that we can reach those students, uh, that way.
In regards to their academics, they do not use the same pre-K curriculum as SA ISD and that has been part of our conversation. And as Ms. Taunton said, we have invited them to our professional learning. They did attend with our pre-K teachers in July. They did not attend with our teachers on November 3rd and I asked if they would be joining us on January 19th, um, and was told not at this time. However, Dr. Moran, Dr. Brandon and I have an upcoming meeting with them. Um, so it, it is part of our goal, but to start, it was the extended day. We are currently with, it'll be part of the, um, academic update, but, um, a team of us, we spend approximately an hour of instruction with 94-year-olds in their program that are dual-enrolled in SA ISD. In the afternoons. However, I think it's part of the community discussions. I'm not trying to be biased as an employee of SA ISD, but as an educator, when they could be in a full-day pre-K program with a certified teacher and that's part of our conversations, that's all I'll say. I'm not trying to cross any lines, but there is obviously a difference.
Appreciate y'all's work on that alignment. All right. Any other questions for Ms. Taunton? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Brandon, our inter-local, um, transportation agreement. We'll have some discussion about that this evening. So we kind of know where we're headed.
Be lively.
Yeah, well, it may.
And I think from the Friday facts, the board knows that, um, the conversation originated, um, from a parent in Cristoval, curious about the process. And so when the parent approached the administration or superintendent at Cristoval ISD, that led to, uh, knowledge of the agreement and the expectation to cross the line required the agreement. And so that, that's where the conversation started and then, um, I think there's approximately 25 to 28 students. I think Cristoval has 100. I don't know where they're all coming from. They're not, about 28. Uh, and that what the superintendent told me was on the bus, pretty closely matches what Mr. Columbach shared from TEA on the PMS report for the number of transfers. So, um, and then the, from there, the conversation grew to just making Very Best, Paint Rock and Olfin aware, uh, that the inter-local agreement existed, uh, and that we would let them know after the board meeting on the 17th, uh, what the expectations were.
So as everyone recalls from Friday facts, there, for a district to bus into, pick up students within our district, an inter-local agreement has to exist for them to be allowed to be, have their buses in our district, um, which has been happening in our district for, as I've lived in San Angelo, but, um, now the question, but now the state has made it to where it either, it cannot happen or there has to be agreements between the districts to allow it to happen. And so what we have to decide as a board is whether we want to have admin go into an inter-local agreement with our neighboring districts to, uh, allow busing within our district or to default to not having an inter-local agreement and saying, we do not allow buses into our district, uh, from outside of our district. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir. And there, there, I'm sure there are cases if, if, if there was a CTE center in a neighboring district, right? There could be, if there was a, some sort of program that we didn't offer, you know, or a small school wanted to come in and we offered to go get the child. So there are circumstances that it makes sense, uh, but you do have to check on the, if you saw the agreement, both districts have to agree that it's to the benefit of their district to allow it to happen. So that was, that was the tricky part in this situation is it's hard for San Angelo ISD to say, we're seeing a benefit from them coming across the line.
And if we do nothing, then it's, we, we don't have to take action at all, correct? The default, I just want to make sure I.
That's correct. It's an, it would be an active action by the board to approve the, the inter-local. If you don't take any action, then you've not approved it.
Perfect. It's like the homeschooling, or no, the homeschool was opposite, we had to vote to not.
Yeah, that, that was, that was different.
That was different. But so if we took no action, there would be no inter-local agreement and then they would not be able to.
Do they have to submit the inter, the request for the inter-local agreement? So like Cristoval, do they, do they have to?
I don't know. I don't know if TA requires that back.
Can y'all pass this for us or approve this and then is that how that works? According to what I was reading, that's what it looked like. Typically, they're going to make the request. We're either going to approve it or not approve it. But it comes down to us if we approve it or not. Right.
So, so just to clarify, you, we, part of this inter-local agreement, we have to say that it's in the best, it's the best for our district for this to happen. Is that right?
Correct. Let me see if I put a copy in.
Is there a date that this has to be approved by or decided by?
I don't think there's any, uh, deadline. It's, it's just supposed to be in place and it is not, so we're already.
That's what I was asking is, yeah, that's what I was asking is like, are we, are we out of?
For years.
That's what I was thinking. Thank you.
All right, any questions? All right, well, we will, we will decide how we go on that next week unless anyone has any more questions on that. If you have questions that come up between now and next Monday, make sure you email Dr. Brandon or Dr. Moran so that you're ready to either.
Yeah, on this particular issue, all we have to do, if we take no action, then there is no inter-local agreement that will exist for these buses to pick up within our district.
So they'll still be able to pick up kids?
They pick up on, in the county, on the county line or the district line.
We will clarify whether we have to vote or not to approve or disapprove. Since they made the request, I don't know if we have, I, I will have that answer. We'll talk with them. We'll get that answer next week.
I guess, quick, quick, question. Is it just Cristoval that comes to our district? Is that the only one currently?
No.
All of them?
Paint Rock, Very Best.
Very Best, Paint Rock and Olfin.
They, people have designated spots and then, so what we're saying, if we say no, those kids have to, their parents will have to.
Right, or move to a spot outside our district.
Well, I think we still have to find out. It has to be, they can't be within district lines.
Right, they could not, they could not cross San Angelo ISD boundary to pick the children up.
So like right now, they pick up kids on Jackson, they pick up kids on Smith Boulevard and all that and they take them out.
Pick up kids on Colsey.
Yeah, Colsey and Rose and all that.
So this would set the, this would set the precedent for what we, we would not, obviously, or my personal take would be, we wouldn't pick and choose which districts we allowed to have inter-local agreements. I think as a board, we need to be consistent.
Right.
And we either need to allow inter-local agreements or not allow inter-local agreements, but we should not say, hey, you know, my niece is in this district and I want that, you know, we need, it needs to be consistent throughout all districts.
Right.
So although it says Cristoval ISD, we're really making a decision for all, for all the districts that have buses.
It affects our ADA as well, so, you know.
Correct. I mean, we still, we still collect the taxes on the property value taxes, but we do lose the average daily attendance.
Average daily attendance.
Uh, for the students attending the other district.
Which is why it's hard to say it makes, is a benefit to our district.
That's, that's my, that's my thing. This has been an ongoing thing for me for a while, so.
Yeah. And it won't, it won't keep those families from going. It's not, we don't have the ability to stop the transfer.
They can still go to that district.
They can still go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's, that will be fun next week. Okay. And then, and then, uh, the financial rating, that has to be public, we'll do that next week. And, uh, election of candidates to serve on Tom Green County Appraisal District, that also needs to be public and, um.
Does that need to be public?
Uh, does, can that be consent? I don't know. There, there are only two candidates and the, and there's two spots, so.
We, did we have to have two hearings on it? Didn't we approve this, the Tom Green County Appraisal District? Or did we?
We approved nominees.
Did we nominate?
Okay, we approved the nominees, now we're going to vote on, right?
We probably wouldn't because we have to separate the points regularly.
I think it needs, yeah. I think we've traditionally done that as regular. And then, um, the next is our MHMR, um, approval of nominees and our liaison, Mrs. Duncan, was at the last meeting when we got all these, so that also would be regular based on their reappointments and a new, one new appointment.
And Dr. Kingman, I'll need to recuse myself from that.
So we need to keep that regular so that you can recuse yourself, so. All right, other than that, we have announcements of, of our pre-agenda December 18th and our regular December 15th. Any board questions or comments before we adjourn? Next week. See y'all.